So, it's three o'clock. We'll go ahead and get the budget workshop going. All right. Roll call, please.
Chair Blair Stickland.
Here.
Vice Chair Gene Enright. Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards. Commissioner Catherine Waldron.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
Present.
Executive Director Emmanuel Almeida.
Present.
Court Counsel John Fumero. We have a forum.
All right, let's please rise for the pledge.
My pledge will be to comply with the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Should I start?
Yep.
Okay. Good afternoon today, commissioners. We are going to discuss our operating renewal, replacement, and capital budget. Since it is a workshop, it is informal. We're here to trade ideas and inform the board what our budget is going to look like. For those present individual presentations, they will be Michael Williams, Ron Cullington, of course, and Carl Baker. So with that, commissioners, I'd like to pass it over to Michael Williams as he's going to present our operating budget.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Good afternoon, commissioners. We're going to jump right ahead and get into the...
Just for, before you start, did you see that? Mr. Enright, Commissioner. What's your name? Richards?
Present.
Okay.
Present.
We're going to go ahead and jump right into the budget workshop. And as Ms. Almeida said, this budget workshop is really to gain the board's input into the budget that staff is proposing for FY '23. I'm Michael Williams with the Record Director of Finance, and I'll be going over the proposed FY '23 operating budget. Ron Cullington will be presenting on the R and R budget and close out with Carl Baker on the capital budget. On the operating budget from an agenda standpoint, this is just really a guide. Again, this is a workshop. It's intended to be interactive, and we hope to get your input as we look to finalize a budget that we will present at the September meeting for your adoption. We'll, because this is my first year at the port, I wanted to go over the budget process here at the port, and I'll touch on that briefly. And we'll talk about the proposed budget FY '23, how it compares to the adopted FY ' '22 budget, and also what we're projecting for FY '22. We'll talk about some of the major revenue and expenditure assumptions that went into formulating the budget. And then we'll look at cash flow from operation. And finally, I'll close out with some budget sensitivity, which is risk and opportunities with respect to the budget. Next slide. Keep going. Just real quick, I think you all know that by law, we're required by Statute 189 to present a balanced budget adopted annually by the board. The budget that we're proposing for FY '23 meets those requirements because our revenues exceeds our expenditures. The budget, for the most part, is a business plan. It's your blueprint that really quantifies and identify ongoing initiatives and new initiatives for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget that we'll be presenting conforms with our bond covenant, which requires us to set aside 5% of the previous year's gross revenues towards business development and renewal and replacement projects. And finally, our budget usually needs to conform with your master plan, and we're in the midst of developing, of course, master plan. Next slide. This is a high level, and I won't touch on all the topics here of a process that we have in house to develop the budget, which, for all intensive purpose, started over two months ago with a kickoff meeting with our executive director of finance team. We talk about what are the major initiatives that we envision that we embark upon. Because our budget is impacted by our tariff, we're proposing tariff changes, which the proposed tariff changes on your regular agenda today for your consideration and adoption. We held two public hearings, and those public comments and input were formulated into the final proposed tariff changes that we're presenting to the board later at a regular meeting. We're here at the workshop today, and again, it's to get your input so we can finalize the budget for presentation at the September meeting for your adoption. On today's agenda also is a resolution to levy or not to levy adverbial taxes. In the past, I believe since 1975, this board has not levied any taxes. So that's a requirement that is far part of the budget process because that obviously will impact your budget. And then finally, again, we'll present the budget in September for your adoption and the resolution that you'll vote on today that will then go to the state of Florida and also the Palm Beach County to notify them formally that we're not levying any adverbial taxes. Next slide, please. This slide here is a high-level summary of our proposed FY '23 budget. And just to orient you to the slide, and for the most part, all the slides following this slide will look the same. We have the adopted budget, that's the current year's budget, what staff is projecting as forecasting, the actuals that we predict by the end of September 30 of this year, what the actuals would look like, the proposed budget for '23. The change is reflected in the budget versus the adopted budget, and then the percentage change. Overall, we're comfortable with the budget that we're presenting, a budget of net income of $1.5 million, which is based on revenues of $18,619,000 and expenditures of $11,764,000. Next slide, please. This is where we're going to take a deeper dive into the assumptions that went into the revenue and the expenditure numbers. The port has a whole host of revenue accounts, but for all intensive purposes, they're broken down into three major buckets. Cargo, which is all your tariff items, rent and leases, which is your leaseholds, your long-term and space assignments revenues, and the cruise line business, which is passenger and parking. On the cargo side, we're projecting, the data up there shows an increase of $319,000 or 3.3%. That's a little bit misleading because in that number, you have to back out the teeters. And so, in reality, for cargo, we're budgeting more of a 7% increase in total cargo volume increase for 2023. And TU is going up 3%. Including in those cargo numbers are about $202,000 in additional revenues, which will be generated from the proposed tariff, which we're presenting across the board, 5% increase if the board adopts that at the regular scheduled meeting. So that's an item of discussion. In your package, I believe you should have received a handout that kind of reflects the historical tariff charges here at the port. And let me just point this out, since 2013, just looking back 10 years, the Consumer Price Index for the South Florida region is a cumulative 28.1% increase since 2018. The tariff increase since, for the same period for the port, is really 12%. So acting on this 5% will get us up to 17%, which is still woefully below the 28% cost of living increase we're seeing here in South Florida. On the rent side, we're looking at an increase of $247,000 over FY '22 adopted budget. And again, that's a little bit misleading because in the '22 budget, we have rent for teeters that we have to adjust. So rent is moving strong, and a big part of that is staff anticipate space assignment for some, if not all, of the teeters parcels, or potentially put an RFP on the street to look at highest and best use for those parcels. We're also looking to generate some revenues from the annexed properties, the remaining portion, once construction is completed, that we envision that we will be leasing out. On the cruise line, we're budgeting the contractual numbers that the cruise line provided, which is 225,000 annual passengers. We're comfortable with that number based on the rebranding of the vessel to Margaritaville. We've seen where month over month since May, their passenger count has increased, and we feel like staff will be working closely with the cruise line to make sure those budgeted numbers of $2.5 million is realized.
I have a question.
Certainly.
What's the total capacity of the cruise line again?
Total capacity of the ship is 1650.
So they sold out recently, didn't they?
Well, Ms. Lee, yes, they sold out, but that simply meant that they stopped getting more passengers in. They sold out at about 1,400. It didn't go to capacity.
All right, thanks, sir.
I have a question as well. Ms. Williams.
Yes.
So there's no minimum guarantees for this upcoming fiscal year, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are there other guarantees associated with the ship or none?
The way the single vessel agreement was written, and I believe that agreement was approved a year ago. It was. It's, any consecutive two months that they have not reached a certain monthly threshold passenger count, the agreement can be terminated, and that's how it's written. The thing here is, we don't have enough data on the Margaritaville at sea. What we're seeing is trying to separate out the Bahama Paradise cruise. Since May, the inauguration of the new branding, we've seen significant increase in month-over-month increase, where if you were to average those months, their passenger count is about 18,000 monthly passengers, which is, if you were to project that out over 12 months, you may get to the 225,000.
Would you make sure in each month that we have a little line item in our financials or something where we look at how they did in the month, the previous month, and the trend line, please?
Yes. I'll just add one more thing, and that is, you saw my email letting everyone know that O'Neill, Kosha is no longer the president. We also know that there is two new individuals. One would be handling basically the marketing, business development aspect of it. Gentleman's name is Chris Ivey. He comes to the shipline from SeaWorld. Vast, extensive experience in dealing with passengers and crews, and so we're looking forward to that. They also have a new CFO. Now, I say that because in about two weeks, or maybe before that, the plan is for both individuals, along with Sheen Jr., to come down and talk to us, and we're going to get all this thing ironed out again.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Keep on going.
This next slide is what I call a budget bridge, if you will. It takes you from the adopted budget to the proposed budget, looking at the major tenants and vendors, if you will, how we get from one place to the next. Couple things to call out here. Talking about the cruise line, the increase in passenger and what the yield would be of about $395,000. The teeters termination, that impacted us by almost $1 million. But the good news here is that they had strong cargo tonnage, mainly from tropical. And if you see that $734,000, that really helped offset some of the impact of teeters. And I'll call out the other negative Gulfstream, pre-pandemic, their volume was about 60,000 tons. We budgeted 50,000 tons in the current fiscal year '22. We're projecting they'll land at around 28,000 tons. So they're, again, on their volume, they're not at the pre-pandemic level as yet. Again, in these numbers here are the annexed property and space assignment for the former teeters property. That's how you get to the projected revenues of $18,619,376. Any questions on this slide? Next slide, please. So we're moving on to the expenditure side, and some of the major assumptions that went into our expenditures of a total planned expenditures of $11,764,000, which is $1,521,000 more than the adopted budget. And this roll-up here is a little bit different than the package that you've received. I try to put all the wages together so we can truly see the impacts of what's going on with the port. Wages and benefits, that's a little bit misleading. It should be, it's really wages, FICA and FRS. Health insurance is not rolled up in that number. And that's a significant increase, $639,000 over the current budget. And there's three primary reasons for that. We're adding two full-time executive positions, obviously the replacement of our current executive director, Ms. Almeida. We anticipate bringing the new executive director onboard for about six months, which will have, which would basically get us to a start date of April 1st of 2023. That gives us six months into the fiscal year. That position is budgeted at $280,000, and again, we're budgeting six months. We're also budgeting a deputy executive director for 10 months, which basically an effective start date of December 1st. And so those two impacts, coupled with a across-the-board 5% wage adjustment for staff, gets you to the $639,000 in wage increase. The 5% is really came from, we started negotiation with some of our unionized employees. Their first pass was pretty hefty. We were able to negotiate down to 5%. We're comfortable with the 5%. And as customary with the port, whatever the unionized employees receive, the administrative staff gets the same allocation, and so that's why you're seeing a 5% across the board. So that explains the wages and wages increase of $639,000. Operations, we're not really an operating port. We're a landlord port, administrative, if you will. And so operation is mostly related to the cruise line, the security work that, and also lease, the FPNL property that we're leasing. Where the increase there of $52,000 is directly related to the leased property from FPNL, that's going up $25,000. And we're budgeting about $30,000 carryover for continued cleaning up of the teeters parcel and equipment and cargoes, and that's what you're seeing. We expect that to continue through October and November of the new fiscal year. Maintenance is a big line item for us here at the port, and maintenance includes everything from utilities, facilities, and grounds that we maintain, our infrastructure. That's increasing by $353,000. A big part of that increase is really a set aside, and this could be a risk or a good guy for us for, we increased $200,000 in our R and R as a set aside for potential mediation of teeters parcels, and that's why you see such a big increase. We've seen some increase in rates for FPNL, and that's what you're seeing, that $76,000 projected increase for next year. And water consumption is really tied to the number of passengers on the cruise. So increased passengers, increased consumption, and that's what you're seeing there. And finally, janitorial services, that RFP is on the street, if my memory serves me right, and we expect that contract to come back with a little bit of increase, so we're budgeting $20,000. Next slide, please.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm looking back up at the wages, and I guess my question is, the 5% will be across the board instead of 3%. Am I correct because of the increased cost of living?
5% is trying to keep up, not quite cost of living. Keep up with cost of living.
Right, I understand. Because things normally, they would receive three, but this year, five.
That's correct. And again, and my apology, I didn't, I, the amount was so minutia that I forgot to list it, but the commissioners were budgeting 3% increase, if I may put that out there.
One other thing, too, so therefore, everyone with the 5% will receive, at least a $2,500 raise, am I correct? The minimum.
The minimum.
The minimum, which is $2,500.
The plan is to, we can certainly make sure of that. I think there'll be a handful of employees that are impacted, and we'll make the adjustments to make sure that's...
I think it's $2,500, right? Yes.
Please restate that, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
The budget as proposed does not ensure that each employee gets a minimum of $2,500 increase. The final budget that will be presented at the September's board meeting will align each employee to ensure...
Right, so, right, if they don't have it, then we'll make sure they receive it.
There are 11 employees that will be positively affected by that action.
Now, what did you say?
11 employees whose currently, current salary does not meet that threshold.
That threshold, so then we're going to make sure we give them the $2,500.
We're true them up to that amount.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next slide. Continuing on with expenses, general and administration is really your catch-all. It's your overhead, it's your telephone, it's your office supplies, that kind of stuff. This is where health insurance and general liability insurance is buried, if you will, and that's increasing also by a significant amount, $353,000. A big chunk of that is we had budgeted a significant increase for health insurance. And since the budget was relieved, we have since received some of the pricing for our health insurance, and it's a little bit lower than what's projected here. I think between the health insurance and our general liability insurance, we'll have some good guys when we return the budget in September of about $105,000, which will drop down to the bottom line. So net income will increase by at least that much. Some of the other increases are IT renewals, some of our contracts that we have in place for software licenses and users, that's going up, and our legislative consulting contract is going up about $12,000. On the business development side, not much of an increase, $19,000. That's related to, again, trying to do more active marketing for the former teeters property if we envision going up for highest and best use for that part, those parcels, and that's what you're seeing. So total expense, again, is projected increase by $1,521,000. Next slide. This slide here, similar to the revenue slide, is your bridge of revenues from your adopted '22 budget to the proposed '23 budget, and starting from the top to bottom, the new, the two new positions, and those, the $480,000 for the executive and deputy includes health insurance, and that's what, that's the full impact of what those two positions for, again, the respective six months for the executive director and 10 months for the deputy would cost the port, 5% would be about $24,000, and so on. Any questions on the expenditures that's been proposed?
One question on the health insurance. You put down 15. I, as I always do, have quite a bit of conversation with our insurance people, and it looks like it might be maybe 9% increase, which considering what we get, is not too bad. I mean, it's Cadillac of all insurance plans, and we're going to stay with the same carrier, but hopefully, it's going to come in at 9%, so that might be a little bit less.
Yes. Yeah, so we'll have some good guys there.
Chair?
Oh, yes, sir.
Down here. With the new positions that are earmarked for the new executive director and deputy, that's inclusive of their FRS and everything else when you factor that in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I see a story being painted here. Looks like a two-month overlap with a new ED and a deputy, I guess for 10 months, is that correct?
That's pretty much it, yeah.
So it's sort of a two-for-one here.
If needed, yeah. Nothing's been decided.
It's a session plan on the budget, so I understand.
So what you're, excuse me, so what you're saying is you hired two new employees?
It's in the budget, so we...
Right, we need to, we can tweak it or do whatever. Hire one, two, three.
Yes, I mean, you.
Right.
Right, yes.
And we might end up, we could, might be lucky to get three. How about for the same amount of money? For the same amount of money, same amount of money.
All right. All right, keep on going, Michael.
Thank you. Non-operating is really, you know, I've been asked, what exactly is that? It's everything that's not the core business that we're in. And so, it's from an accounting standpoint, we call it below the line, if you will. But I do want to call out a couple of things on this slide, and it's interest earnings, that's actually interest income. We're budgeted for this year about, was budgeted for $10,000. We're expecting about $90,000 in income from our cash balance, and that's due directly to the Fed's rate being increasing. We expect that to continue through the end of the next fiscal year at 3%. If that's holds through, we expect to have a yield of about $430,000, which is a significant increase over the $10,000 that's budgeted for FY '22. And on our bonds, as we move towards paying down our obligations, you see where bond interest expense is reducing, and so I just want to call that out. Next slide, please. This slide here is really looking at, from a cash flow standpoint, and if you notice, you'll not see depreciation on here, this is straight cash, revenues from operations, your expenses, budgeted expenses for FY '23, less your debt payment of $4,173, you'll have $2.682 million available. That is the funds that we can then use towards R and R, or what we do here is leverage those funds with Florida DOT dollars to do capital improvement projects and so forth. So just want to put that out there for, next slide. And finally, I tend to look at when I do present on the budget, it's called a sensitivity of risk and opportunities, if you will. From a good guy standpoint, the former teeters property is available. We could do space assignment, or we could look to do an RFP or work directly with one of our existing tenant and get highest and best value for that property. Margaritaville is, again, we talked about it briefly, is a medium risk with respect to, we don't have enough data under the new brand to know exactly where that passenger count is going. So we think from the first three months, we may get to $225,000, but we may not. And so it's just really a medium risk that we got to monitor very closely. High risk, you know, depends on who you talk to. We could be in a recession already, but inflation, and so that could impact cargo, with tropical in particular. And that, again, could impact our revenues because we're budgeting significant increase from the cargo. And finally, environmental, we have $200,000 set aside in the budget in the R and R line item to, for any remediation effort. On your agenda today at a regular board meeting is a phase two environmental. We don't know what that's going to cost us, hopefully nothing, but we're budgeting $200,000, so that's a risk. And that's, next slide. I believe that concludes my presentation, and if there's any other questions on the operating budget, I'll be more than happy to take them. operating budget, I'll be more than happy to take them.
I have a question.
Um, if we get money from Washington, Tallahassee, none of that's really put into the budget, we get it, it's just like a bonus type thing, is that how that works?
Yes, if, if typically, the type of funds we get from, be it the Feds or Tallahassee, are earmarked towards capital programs, and, and Carl Baker is gonna talk more about our capital program, that's usually where we, um, align those funds, and it, those funds usually require a matching dollars. A lot of times, a dollar for dollar, or seventy-five, twenty-five, that's where the funds from cash flow that I went through, those funds are available to match those dollars, so that's, that's a nexus there.
The reason why I ask, I don't know if anybody else saw that, but it was, I think it was in Florida, Florida Trend or something, like, two days ago, the Secretary of the Treasury, Pete Buttigieg, was in Tampa handing the Port of Tampa a check for fourteen million dollars. So, that was pretty nice, of course, I think it's a small part of what they're doing over there, but.
It is the first round, I think there's more rounds, so we should be able to go for some of that money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteen million, so, that was, not a nice, and he actually showed up to give him the check.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's been traveling all around to get out his check.
I saw Catherine, I saw Catherine, was right there.
She needs to stop here, we need to give us a five dollars, we need.
Yeah, all right, anybody else ever?
I have a question, um, actually.
Go ahead.
Do we, um, if, if any land becomes available to purchase, do, do we have any of that in the budget?
I, I didn't get that, what?
Uh, if, if there's any land that is available for us to purchase, is there any budget play for that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh, I'll, I'll, I always want, uh, in our upcoming vested meeting, we have slotted, what, two million, no, two hundred?
Three point, three point eight-five million.
Yeah, so, any land that would be available, I would ask the board to really look favorable towards us grabbing it.
Okay, that's good.
Carl will talk more about, uh, funding and use of those funding in, in the capital presentation. So, with that, we'll pivot over to, uh, next slide, if you don't mind, uh, to the R and R budget, and I'll turn it over to Ron Cunnington, we'll talk more about the project specifics, and then I will close it out.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, you'll notice, um, the past couple of years, we've been a little light on our use of the R and R budget. Part of it was, we had some, some good capital projects going on that kept us pretty busy, but we also had the scares of COVID, et cetera, so the port ran light for those years, as, as you liked us to do. We did in FY twenty-two, in the R and R budget, we did make some amendments in that budget during the years, things started to look better. One of those amendments was the eighty-six thousand dollar, which was the, the amount the merchants paving a drainage project went over our budget, and, uh, that project is going on very well right now. Another one of the big ones is the, um, Marine Operations Center, uh, Chiller Plant Rebuild, Chiller Plant Replacement, and also, at times called the VAV Replacements. That budget got a seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar increase, uh, in order to fund that. So, so we had some adjustments to FY twenty-two of about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A lot of those projects carried forward this year. You can see our proposal for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, projects is much more aggressive. Some of those, you'll see the, the new work that will be phase-two, already approved of the Chiller Plant Replacement, is funded at eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Vehicle replacements, those things are normal here. We do have a, when we get down into the newer items, the MOC elevators, as, um, you will be approved, you've approved us to go out for bids, you'll be approving a project soon on that. We've budgeted one million dollars for that, and that is for major upgrades and modernization of the elevators within this building, to bring them up to, uh, both Florida standards that are coming into play by twenty twenty-three, but also just an enhancement, they'll, they'll, they'll look new when they're done as they should, they're twenty-two years old. Another one we've got highlighted here for you to see is the, uh, four hundred thousand dollar for relocation of valve boxes for berth fourteen. In order to accommodate our fabulous new tenant, Ozinga, uh, we've got to make some modifications to the dock so that the Ozinga unloaders, and also the cement unloader that C-Mex is bringing in, or has brought in, so it can run on that dock. Right now, we've budgeted four hundred thousand dollars for valve box relocation to get them off the dock and back, uh, about sixty feet from the dock, so that the unloaders don't run into them. And, uh, those are the key items. You'll see that our budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is, uh, three point four million plus the carryover of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. So, we have a very aggressive budget of four million four hundred thirty thousand dollars. This is in part by request from the Commission for us to upgrade some of our, uh, deteriorating infrastructure, and also enhance some of the existing infrastructure, such as paving and drainage, where we don't currently, currently have it. I can ask any detailed questions you may have on any of the line items, but that's the basic gist of what this budget is doing this year. And it's responding to some Commissioners' requests for us to get back on track with our renewal and replacement, which are non, non, uh, grant-funded projects of a capital nature, and then also just some normal maintenance that has to happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Please spend the money this, this year. Spend the money.
You can bet I will.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Does this include, uh, the buildings that we own?
Yes, it does include the buildings that we own, uh, in general, but this, these three specific buildings that are of concern for us, eleven, twelve and thirteen, we're seeking grant funding, and we, we have that in the works, and Carl may touch on that. I don't know if they're all signed and operating grants, but, but we'll be working on those three main buildings. Things like the MOC elevator repair and air conditioning upgrades are, of course, part of this building, but we're looking at all of our buildings. We're also looking at something that I didn't realize we had so much of was unpaved areas in the port that we'll bring into paving, which makes it easier to not have a problem like teeters happen. We know already that the impact to the ground in the paved portion of teeters, we know, is much cleaner than the unpaved portion of teeters. So, those are more of the projects that we'll be bringing to you in the future.
And I would speak to some of our tenant-owned, uh, tenant lease buildings as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but it's currently not in this?
There's not any identified items in those lease buildings right now. Some of that could be covered under the operating, uh, the non-capital portion of operating.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next.
So, this next slide is, Ron talked about the R and R, and the new projects is totaling about three point five million, and this is more of an accounting thing, we're in governmental accounting, uh, we have to officially move the funds from unrestricted to restrictive account of renewal and replacement. So, you'll see, when the R and R budget is presented to the board, we'll be moving funds from one account to the next, if you will. Next slide. And that takes us to the capital program.
Commissioners, Carl Baker, Director of Planning, like to talk about the capital projects that we've got going for the next couple of years. Uh, the main portion of this slide, you've already seen last year. We've got our Port Infrastructure Development Grant, which has just started, they're still waiting for the master plan to finish up, so that everybody's on the same sheet. Uh, the on-port rail facility expansion, that money is gonna go towards the rail inside the PIDP. Uh, the multi, multi-ship passenger loading bridge, if you remember, we bought the bridge, it came out of Canaveral, and it's currently sitting over at South Gate, and we're waiting to see how the cruise line does before we commit, you know, another million dollars to installing it. The Annex property, that project is nearing completion, uh, there's some IT stuff they've got to put in, and then it'll be done. Uh, cathodic protection, the zinc anodes to protect the docks. Ron has already ordered a thousand of the anodes, and they're on order right now, so that's moving forward. The master plan, you're all aware, that has been moving forward nicely. Uh, Kerry Simpson, who heads the master plan group, will be here next month for the September meeting, and will provide a ten, ten, twelve-minute update of where everything is. Also, at that time, you'll, you will be receiving a draft copy of the master plan. Uh, Warehouse thirteen replacement, we have a grant for that. We're not gonna do anything until we know where we're gonna put it. Again, that's a master plan thing, and there's a lot of other things afoot, and it would be tragic to start building the building, and then have to take it down because we've got railroad tracks running through it. Uh, GIS for Port Infrastructure, uh, we've already spent, we spent about twenty-seven thousand dollars already for the, uh, survey equipment, so we know exactly where everything is out there in the port, and then we've, uh, it's, I'm sorry, it's almost kinda cut off. The North Fence Security System, that came out of the F State Security Committee from about three weeks ago, and that's just to block off the last portion of the fence on the north property along Eleventh Street. And again, we have PTGAs signed or waiting to be signed for all of these projects, this is all guaranteed money. The last thing we have is, we're looking to do, to answer Commissioner Waldron's question, uh, we're looking at some property, we've identified, our estimated in-house guestimate is eight million dollars. This year, the Florida Ports Council is a little light on funds, and the best we were able to come up with was three point six five out of the four million for the match. So, it's a start, plus, we've got a couple of projects that are nearing completion, and there's gonna be some money left over, and we can transfer that money out of those completed projects into here. So, that brings us up to a total count of thirty-four million three hundred and forty-nine thousand grants that are available, and we're gonna have to match it with about eighteen point six million in cash. But, Commissioner Siklin, as you used to say, Mr. Zalinski, do we have the cash? Yes, sir, we do.
Yes, we do. Okay, any questions? Any answers? Okay.
I, uh, I have a question, clarification, back to the salary. I've heard two numbers, for twenty-five-hundred minimum, I've also heard twenty-two fifty. Did we go twenty-five-hundred?
It was twenty-five-hundred, the amount stated from years ago.
Just wanted to get that clear.
Yeah, it's always twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, is that pretty much your?
That pretty much is it.
Okay, any other, we have a card from.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
The last slide, please, the very last slide. Property acquisition. In general, any specific properties or, uh, that property acquisition, is that, are any specific parcels in mind?
Sure, uh, as you know, Commissioners, we have, we purchased in that, let's call it, that block right after Tenth Street, and there are about three properties that we're looking at, just to complete, if we are successful, we would have the entire block. I'll, I'll show you. We basically have an L-shaped ownership. There are about three properties that we're now looking at, uh, as I said, one is for sale, I heard about it this morning, if someone's listening, but we don't wanna stop here. This is a clerk, a clergy.
Clerg, clergy.
He's interested in selling, uh, so we're gonna be discussing that as well. Preferably, this area is, just attaches right onto our port, so that's, that's very convenient. Here, uh, again, once we get, if we're successful in getting them, we will own this entire block. Thank you. I don't want to go into great detail.
No, exactly, we have, for the right price, we're always interested, so, all right. Gerald Ward, he's back in town, come on up.
Good to see you.
Yeah, I'll see you.
I should be here more often.
That's exactly what we said last month.
Gerald Ward, twenty-one thirty-five Broadway, New Year Beach. Obviously, the budget, uh, somebody said was light last, uh, fiscal year in terms of renewal and replacement, or for probably forty years, it's been light. This port does need to do payments, and I, I heard two hundred thousand of that, it's nothing more than remediation of, uh, the teeters property. That still doesn't bring the place up to being a functional port in terms of paving and drainage, and that includes drainage. In fact, can't emphasize it enough, because we're very interested, we're getting new regulations for program work, so we will end up having to do more work on drainage than you ever did. The second part is the master plan. I hear that finally, the board is going to get something. We went to the first of June, second of June meetings, with no product out of the consultant after three quarters of a year. That planning project, a master plan, uh, quite possibly, had, will recall a removal of this building, the Opel Office Building, get something more functional, uh, whether the ferry is going, you've heard several of your consult, your, uh, employees say that they are, uh, questionable, it's a risk, and I don't think that the passenger trade has ever been, uh, really great here. Somebody needs to look at the funds for the, uh, lobbying. We probably don't need lobbying in Tallahassee, we need lobbying in the Bahamas, make that more profitable. There is certainly, uh, the ferry is a better operation than the allegations of cruise ships. New Year Beach started back in the eighties with quote cruise ships, actually gambling ships, and it's never been a real profit center. Every other year, you find out there's a deficit. So, you really need to go back to the budget and add to renewal and replacement, there are numerous projects there, and then look at what the master plan is going to produce. That master plan is now over a year in progress, and nobody's gotten any hard data yet. It's, it's not going to be funny when you come in here next month and see something that the public's never even seen. So, let's get with the timeliness of the master plan and understand that the budget is way light on expenditures.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Bee, what do we have to do now? Close this and, and wait, we have to wait any set time for?
Give us one minute to transition.
Means there's nothing doing.